Welcome to the Citrus County Chronicle's annual political forum. This is a public service event coordinated by the newspaper as it has done for the last six decades. My name's Jerry Mulligan. I'm publisher of the newspaper, and our tradition has been to conduct this forum at the county auditorium in Inverness, but the COVID-19 has changed everything about this year's election season. You guys know that. In respect for the public health concerns of holding large indoor public gatherings, we're conducting these recorded interviews to share with the voting public. There are three candidates in this nonpartisan contest: the incumbent, Virginia Ginger Bryant, Danielle D'Amato Doty, and Mark Garlock. All voters get to participate, and the top vote getter in the August 18th primary will be the next school board member from this district. The format today will be that each candidate gets a three-minute opening statement, followed by questions from a reporter, and that'll be Mike Wright. And when he's finished with the questions, each one of you will get a one-minute closing statement. Okay? So with that, let's go ahead and get started, and Ms. Bryant, you get to start off with an opening statement.
Okay. Hi. I am Ginger Bryant, your school board member from District 2 for 20 years. Can you believe that? I've got a few reasons here why you should consider voting for me again. First of all, let me begin by saying that I appreciate the trust, the confidence, and the support you've given me in past elections. Our students excel at the state, at the local, and the national levels. Our superintendent and our Support Person of the Year is the best in Florida. We're talking from Dade to Duval to Escambia to right down here in Little Old Citrus. They're number one, which I think is pretty awesome. My entire adult life, I've been devoted to educational excellence, educational excellence for all students in Citrus County. First as a teacher at Crystal River Middle School for 25 years, and next as a school board member for 20 years. I was educated here. I went to Home of Sasa Elementary School, Crystal River Elementary School, and I graduated from Crystal River High School before going on to the University of Florida to get a Bachelor of Arts in Education. My husband, Nick Bryant, is a former teacher, coach, realtor, and he was a county commissioner here for 12 years. I don't know if any of you guys remember that, but he was. Our three children followed in our footsteps, and they all graduated from Citrus County schools: Nick Bryant III, Alice Harrell in Beverly Tidwell, and then they went on to further education. Right now, if you can believe it, we have six great grandchildren enrolled in our school system. My diverse school and community activities, I've got a list here, this is nowhere near all of them, but they include school advisory council, Tropicana speech contest, science fair judging, African-American read-in, regular school visits, and Kiwanis. Let's just name it a few. At the state level, I serve on the governing board of the Florida School Boards Association, and I also am a member of the Florida School Board's Insurance Trust, which saves lots of money for our schools. During this pandemic, we need to continue our focus on mental health and safety of our students and staffs. We have added more school guardians, SROs, and systems such as Alice Training for additional levels of safety. This is a time in our community where we need experienced leaders who can manage through the ever-changing needs of our students and staff. My knowledge and experience have helped to make Citrus County one of the best schools. A vote for Ginger Bryant is a vote for our children.
Very good. Ms. Doty?
Thank you. Again, my name is Danielle D'Amato Doty, and I would like to thank the Chronicle for this opportunity to reach voters today. I grew up here in Citrus County, and I'm 43 years old. My family has very deep roots here, and we have always valued community and public service. My husband, Chris, is a United States Marine Corps veteran, and we have two boys. I graduated from La Canto High School and also from the University of Florida, where I earned a Bachelor of Science degree in public relations. My professional career began here in Citrus County over 20 years ago, directing a collaborative network through the Citrus County School District and the Citrus County Sheriff's Office, where I learned the complexities of government and nonprofit relations. I also worked with school resource officers and student clubs to help our youth focus on making good decisions in their lives. While working with leaders and people from all sectors of the community, I honed my skills in facilitation, communication, and engagement. I am proud that the Citrus County Community Alliance continues to connect organizations today. In 2007, I accepted a position with Kid Central Incorporated, the lead agency for child welfare services in Citrus, Hernando, Lake, Marion, and Sumter Counties. As Director of Community Development for the large private sector agency, I was on the management team that was responsible for a $45 million budget. That experience will be extremely beneficial as a school board member with oversight of the district budget and policies. More recently, I served as Community Relations Manager for the College of Central Florida in Citrus, Levy, and Marion Counties. This provided me with an understanding of how the college works with our high schools and the importance of career education for all students. I frequently spoke with parents who need more information to help their children navigate a pathway to success. My relevant work experience will bring a brand-new dynamic to the school board. Many voters do not realize that three out of the five current school board members are retired teachers, including the incumbent in this race. The board has plenty of education experience, and many voters have expressed to me that the board should be more representative of our community and reflect a variety of professional experiences. My education and work in the nonprofit, public, and private sectors will enable me to build relationships, advocate for students, and bring a fresh perspective to the Citrus County School Board. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Now, Mr. Garlock.
Thank you, Mr. Mulligan. I'm often asked why I want to be on the school board. The simple answer I have for why I want to be on the school board is for the students. I desire to look at things with fresh eyes. I think every organizational body has room for improvement. I've been in the schools as a teacher, a coach, and at home as a parent. I bring a well-balanced perspective, and I know I can help the board with new ideas. It's been said if one is not part of the problem, one should be part of the solution. I would like to be part of the solution to some of the needs that I see in our district. I would like to see us be one of the top five districts in the state. We used to be an A district, and we've fallen to a B district. We can't sit on our laurels. I'd like for us to strive, I would like us to strive for a 10% improvement in all of the pertinent data that is looked at by the state. As a Citrus County teacher of 25 years, 17 in elementary and the last eight in high school, I advanced my personal education through books and networking. As a school board member, I would cultivate and develop our school system. Like a builder looks at blueprints for a building, I will look at the school system and be critical of areas for improvement. The school board is a complex atmosphere in which problem-solving takes precedence. The process of pitching ideas and working together to reach a solution is of paramount importance. I've scoured the budget, and I've found several areas for improvement that I can save us close to $1 million. I'm eager to tackle these hard decisions and eager to serve the taxpayers. By saving us dollars, we in turn can better serve our number-one goal, and that is the education of our students. Thank you for listening. My desire is to go into depth with some of the areas of concern you have today. I trust that I can earn your vote for school board District Seat 2.
Okay. Good job, candidates. Now, we're going to bring up Mike Wright, reporter at the Chronicle, who's going to ask some questions. Mike.
Thank you, Jerry. Hello, candidates.
Hello.
Hi.
We'll start this, I'm going to ask three questions, one at a time. You have one minute, you have one minute to answer the question, and we'll start with Ms. Doty. And here's the first question. What's your position on corporal punishment? Should kids get paddled when they misbehave?
That's an interesting question. When I first started out going to school, I attended a school, which is no longer there, but it was in Home of Sasa called Citrus Christian School, and those were the days of corporal punishment. And I remember that many of the young students, and I started there in pre-K, I was very, they were very scared of being paddled. And it's something that I vividly remember of some children going to the principal's office, getting paddled, and then returning to the classroom, and it was very scary. While it was certainly a deterrent, I would say, for bad behavior, I also felt that probably the mental health aspects of that were very negative and, you know, promoted a type of punishment and violence that I don't think is acceptable today at all. I think there are much better ways to discipline children and better ways to do that than paddling or corporal punishments.
Thank you. Mr. Garlock.
Corporal punishment should be as a last resort. There is a, it is available. Parents can allow it to happen if they feel that it's necessary. They have to give us permission to do so. I remember a student of mine, a student when I was in school back in third grade, and he got paddled in the classroom, and it definitely made an impression on the rest of us, and we didn't let that happen. And so it should be a last resort. I don't think it should be in public if it happens. There are other ways to discipline students. Classroom management is, of course, the first area, but it can, corporal punishment can be a deterrent, and so I would, I would say it is necessary in certain situations, yes.
Thank you. Ms. Bryant.
You know, when I started out, it was in the olden days, and we did paddle. We don't do that anymore, and I'm really kind of glad that we don't. I'm opposed to it. I don't want our teachers to have to paddle students, and I've got some teachers that I know I don't want paddling my students. You know what I'm saying? Just saying. There was a time when it worked in our, in our community, but I don't think it works anymore. I'm opposed to it.
Thank you. By the way, I'm very proud of myself that I asked that question as corporal punishment, not capital punishment, which I'm sure we all agree does not have place in the school system.
No.
Okay. We're going to start with Mr. Garlock this time. For graduation rates, we've learned recently that white students in Citrus County graduate at a 14% rate higher than black students. And I'd like to know, all three of you, why do you think that is, and what can we do about it? Mr. Garlock?
Well, I believe that the same material is put out there in a classroom setting. I think a lot of it stems from the socioeconomic situations that we're in, and school literacy starts actually in pre-K. And so students need to be learning to, they need to be read to at home, not just in school. And so I think in some cases, homes in some of our impoverished areas of the county just don't have books available to be read. And there are free book programs out there. First Book is one of them, but I know I was read to, I learned how to read when I was, you know, coming through elementary school and before I even went to school. So I just think it's, that is probably the root of why there's a discrepancy in our grading.
Thank you. Ms. Bryant?
Well, we have many reasons. You know, we've got the, I think it's like 75% free and reduced lunch in our whole county. I know there's some socioeconomic factors there. I want us to work with our, our students that are behind and bring them back up to the top. They, they need mentors. They need our community to come in and help them. Our teachers work really hard, but they can't always get to every student, and we need to, we need to help the teachers so that every student receives everything they need.
Thank you. Ms. Doty?
Well, I think your question is very important, and it's upsetting that there's such a discrepancy with that percentage, but it is true that we do have many, many students, a very high percentage, that do meet those federal poverty guidelines, qualify for free, and reduce lunch, and those kind of factors, children going home and being hungry. I know how many students that the Blessings Program serves, you know, sending food home on the weekends, and there are so many things that affect families. And one of the experiences that I would bring to the board is my work at Kid Central and working with at-risk families, families of students that are in foster care, students that have been adopted. So in addition to some of the things we've already discussed, they are children that are facing traumatic situations that have happened in their life. And of course, there are those socioeconomic factors, perhaps not having a mother and a father in the home. Those things can affect a child so much. One thing that I think across the board would help with so many of the problems is better communication with parents to help them understand where their children might be lacking and ways that they can be more supported at home, and the use of parent facilitators and family facilitators in the district to try to seek out those families that need more support.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Bryant, we'll start with you on this one. Here's the question, the question has to do with the SROs and the police force. Is it, is it necessary for the school district to have its own police force when the sheriff's office has SROs in all the schools? My tax dollar pays for the public education and pays for the sheriff's office. Why are both of those agencies spending money on police in the school district? Is it necessary to have both of them?
Well, in view of recent events in Florida, where crazy people with guns have gotten in, we need more help, and one way to help is school guardians. Our school guardians are excellent. They meet all the criteria that the SROs meet. In fact, some of them were the school resource officers, and they're now guardians. And if we had more, I'd be for it. I don't, I don't see it as a detriment. I see them working together.
Thank you. Mr. Garlock?
Well, I just noticed that the governor vetoed the Aaron Fies program, which is important, came out of the Parkland shootings two years ago. And so it's a, it's a funding issue as well, but I, it was safer on campus having to, a guardian and an SRO last year. I thought they were very helpful. It was important to have them on there, but I believe that we can, at this point, drop back to just having the SROs again, simply because I think the program is not going to be funded again this year. At least, that's my understanding of what happened with the governor's veto of that, of that program. We're not going to get the state funding to, to enable us to have a guardian program. The SROs do a fabulous job. They actually go in and teach some of our high school students, maybe even at the middle school. And I know when I was at the elementary school, the SROs had, had programs for our third, fourth, and fifth graders on how to stay safe when you're out in the community, and that's a very important lesson to learn in the third grade for kidnappings and all of that, those scenarios that happen. So that's very important for the SROs. I just, as a funding thing, I think it's going to be very difficult to do guardians this year.
Thank you. Ms. Doty?
Well, in relation to your question as far as a taxpayer and using taxpayer funding, I think it's always important that we're all wary of programs that are duplicating their efforts, but it's my understanding as well that when the funding first came down, it couldn't be used to supplement SROs, and so that's why there was kind of that little pushback between the sheriff's office and the school district. I think more, not less, is definitely better. You never know when something can happen, and the districts that it has happened in, I think, would have never, never expected those tragedies to come through their doors. I can say for myself, when I had my first job, which was with the district, and I got to work with our SROs, some of those same SROs are still SROs today, and what a, what a caring group of people that really care about the students, and they know what they're doing, they're in our schools. I know the guardians do as well, but I would always support more, not less, and I think it would be a shame, you know, to lose the guardians. I think the programs complement each other.
Thank you. Now, I know I told you I was going to ask you three questions, but of course, now I'm going to ask you a fourth one. This is, there's always talk about change in a race when there's a long-term incumbent, as Ms. Bryant is, and challengers, but as we know, change for the sake of change is not always a good thing. So to the challengers, please, can you give me one thing, give me, give just one example of something that you plan to present to the school board once you're elected, if you're elected, that is new, that's fresh? We talk about fresh. Give us one example of the fresh idea you have. And to Ms. Bryant, if you could tell us, please, why is it an advantage for voters to vote for an incumbent in this race as opposed to fresh ideas? And let's start with Ms. Doty.
Well, one thing that I brought up in my Chronicle editorial board interview is something that it may not be a definitively school board issue, but something that I've heard talked in the community about for a while now. At a few different Chamber of Commerce events that I had been to where Superintendent Himmel was speaking, she had brought up the problem of affordable housing in the community. And I feel like when you hear somebody say something once, twice, I almost felt like it was her reaching out with everything that she does for the district day-to-day. I'm sure she doesn't have time to tackle affordable housing for teachers. But I feel like it's something that the school board or a member of the school board representative could work together with the county commission, with our building industry to come up with a way that we can solve this problem, because it's not just a problem for teachers. I would call it more workforce housing. So for first responders, for people who work in our hospitals, our healthcare workers, they need to be able to stay in our community and have an affordable place to live so that they don't leave. We have teachers that come, they can't find an affordable rent. I've heard they either live in Marion County, live in Hernando County, teach here, the next year, they end up moving to those counties and getting a teaching job there because they can find a place to live. So we need to keep these people who come to our community and get jobs, these quality workers, we need to keep them here with us, and I think it's a really great project for us to tackle and accomplish.
Thank you, Ms. Doty. Mr. Garlock?
Thank you, Mr. Wright, for that question. I had students come up to me in the last two years, and they have said, "Mr. Garlock, I really don't want to go on to my next class because we have a long-term sub in there, and we don't really learn anything. We're watching movies, or we're getting worksheets, and so we're really not learning anything." Or they get on their phone and start texting their friends who are in another class that's only interrupting them, and so it's just an addiction that they have with cell phones. But my, my thing is with technology, every single one of our classrooms in the county now has projectors. And so I'm, my idea is, is in these situations, just the long-term subsituations, when we have a teacher that's out for National Guard duty, which we had a couple of years ago in the Panhandle, and he was gone for three weeks, then he came back and, and decided to leave teaching altogether. We've got other teachers that start in September, and all of a sudden, they decide to leave teaching. Maternity leave, things of that nature, paternity leave. And so in those long-term subsituations, I think that we could match in, patch in, and concurrently teach from another school the same exact class, and every school has the same class codes in most cases. And so they could teach from, say, Citrus High School to Crystal River High, so at least they're getting an education. I felt so, it hit my heart that it was breaking my heart that they didn't want to go and get an edu, they wanted an education, they couldn't get one. And sometimes, you know, I've been in situations where I've been out and, you know, and they'll have not a long-term situation, but they always put in subplans, and sometimes, subplans are done in two days when they were supposed to last for a week or a week and a half. And so I think that would be a way to use technology to up our graduation rates, up our grade levels.
Thank you, Mr. Garlock.
Thank you.
Ms. Bryant?
You know, in 1990 or '91, we had a thing called Blueprint 2000, where a lot of teachers and administrators from this county went to Jacksonville. The governor came and met with us to put in place our advisory councils, our school advisory councils, and I go to those meetings faithfully. And in fact, everybody in this room could go to them if you wanted to. They're made up of the community, of business leaders, of teachers, of students, of support staff, anybody who's interested in schools can belong to the advisory council, and it just blesses my heart to be able to hear the concerns that everybody has and work together to solve whatever problems that they might have. I go to five this year, five different, and the course of the years, I think I've gone to all of them. It is an excellent, excellent thing that we have. It's called the advisory council, and I strongly recommend that you guys join us.
Thank you. Good, good job, candidates. Okay, we're going to do the one-minute closing statement now. We're going to go in reverse order, so we'll start with Mr. Garlock.
Well, thank you to the Chronicle for organizing this debate, also to the Performing Arts Center for hosting this event. The arts are near and dear to my heart, obviously. I consider myself a team player, and I listen to ideas with an open mind. The two areas that I would focus on changing are accountability and conversational leadership. The accountability I'm talking about is holding yourself accountable and to know your own limitations. The leadership involves listening to the experts. I've had many conversations with colleagues from all areas of education and business, and I'd like the opportunity to move the school board forward instead of siding with the majority. I'm an innovator and a motivator. We need new ideas on the board, but even the best plans fall flat without someone to see them through. Through my career as an educator, I motivated students, players, and as a member of the school board, I will be an active presence for everyone. My impetus is not to micromanage. There are many different groups of people who have a real stake in how our schools are doing, from the students and parents to the teachers, administrators, and support staff. They need someone they can turn to, and I'm that missing piece. So lock up your vote for Mark Garlock. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garlock. Ms. Doty?
Thank you, and once again, I'd like to thank the Chronicle for this opportunity. As we have just discussed, the voters of Citrus County have a very clear choice in this race. As we have stated, the incumbent has been on the school
As we have stated, the incumbent has been on the school board for 20 years. We can certainly respect her many years of teaching experience, which I do, and I've told her that myself. And at the same time, we can also feel that 20 years is a long time to be in the same elected position. I do believe that change is good for many reasons. New perspectives bring new ideas and new ways to solve problems. It is time for this change in District 2. And if I'm elected, I will pledge to you, the voters of Citrus County, that I would not serve for more than two terms on the school board. I really look forward to using my education and my professional experiences to build relationships, advocate for our students, our teachers, and our families, and bring a new dynamic to the school board. I humbly ask for your vote. My name is Danielle Demotto-Dody. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Ms. Bryant?
Experience, experience, experience. Now, my husband likes to aggravate me and call me a politician, but I set him straight. I say, "Honey, once you've been in a classroom, middle school classroom, for nearly 30 years, that is proof positive that you are a public servant." I don't want to hear any more of this politics stuff. Now, how many of you are going to be around in 50 years? I'm not. I'm not going to be here. Our children are the future. I know this community. I know what's best for children. You can't lie to me about what students need. A vote for Ginger Bryant is a vote for our children.
Thank you very much, candidates. Thanks for coming out today, and good luck in the primary.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.